Good evening. Welcome to the August 11, 2020 combined work session and regular virtual meeting. The first item on the work session is the reciting of the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
During this unprecedented time, while schools are closed and social distancing requirements are in place, the Upper Darby School District needs to continue certain aspects of its business, which includes decisions concerning pandemic planning. For this reason, the Upper Darby School District will continue regularly scheduled school board meetings while Governor Wolf's emergency declaration is in place. It is the plan of the school board to hold these meetings with the minimum required departures from normal operating procedures. The Upper Darby School District School Board COVID-19 Special Operating Procedures Document outlines expected departures from those normal operating procedures and the policy justifications for such departures. At the start of each board meeting held during the emergency declaration, the board will review the departures from normal operating procedures as well as their justifications. While schools are closed and social distancing requirements are in place, the Upper Darby School District School Board finds it necessary to hold virtual school board meetings and school board committee meetings to complete required business. These virtual meetings will allow for public viewing and participation. Following practices already in place for regular meetings, all virtual school board meetings, in addition to allowing near real-time public viewing and participation, will be recorded and the recordings made available after the meeting. In order to hold virtual meetings, virtual school board meetings, adjustments need to be made following existing board policy. These adjustments have been outlined in the Upper Darby School District School Board COVID-19 Special Operating Procedures. Dr. McGary?
Thank you, Board President Brown. The school district has made every effort through this pandemic to encourage and engage with the public as we continue with our public meetings. In that same vein, we are asking for public participation. For this evening's board meeting, those who would like to participate and send a comment or a question to the board or to the administration may do so by two ways. One, they can send an email to boardmeetingcomments@upperdarbysd.org. Please make sure you leave your name, your address, and the report with which you'd like to comment so that we have that on the record. You could also phone in at (610) 789-7200, extension 2000, and you can then leave a message. Please make sure you leave your name, address, and the report you would like to comment on. A link to the district's official YouTube channel has been shared in the board meeting advertisement, in subsequent parent link communications, across district Facebook, Instagram, Twitter, and other social media accounts. As I stated, opportunities for public comment will be provided at the conclusion of each report prior to the board taking action on that report. We look forward to your participation. I'll turn it back over to you, Board President Brown.
Thank you, Dr. McGary. The second item on the work session is an update of the staffing data for the 2020-2021 school year. Dr. Counsel?
Thank you, and good evening, members of the board, members of the community, and employees of the Upper Darby School District. I would like to just take a moment to provide a brief, I would like to provide the board and the community with a brief update on our staffing to date. The professional appointments data show that we are experiencing a significant decrease in the number of new hires this year in comparison to last year. The number of new hires have decreased by 79% between June 2019 and August 2019 and June 2020 to August of 2020. From June through August of 2019, we hired 52 professional employees. During the same time period this year, we are hiring 11 professional employees. In September 2019, we hired 24 new professional employees, which provided us with a total of 76. We do not have the numbers of new hires at this time for September. However, I believe that we will see a similar percentage decrease throughout the year. So this data represents a significant decrease that I'm expected, that I expect will be well below the annual 8% turnover rate that we normally experience. I would project that we may see our annual increase to be close to 4% to 5% throughout the year. That includes my update.
Thank you, Dr. Counsel. The final item on the work session is an overview of student enrollment, registration, and withdrawal policy reminders, and that will be done by Ed Marshallack.
Good evening, school board directors and the Upper Darby school community. Tonight, as part of the work session, we'll give you an update on total district's enrollment, where we are right now from August 2020 compared to where we were in August 2019. We also want to use this opportunity to remind all our families, anyone who's watching. We may have neighbors or relatives or anyone in their community that might be waiting to enroll their student in school for this coming school year, including our kindergarten, incoming kindergarten students. Please make sure you reach out to the central registration department. The link is attached to this presentation. It's also on the district website. And start the process for the online enrollment and the steps you need to take to enroll your child in school for next school year. So as you can see, at this time last year in August 2019, at the board meeting, we had about 12,550 students currently enrolled. At this time, this evening, we have 12,513 students who are currently enrolled in our school district. I want to point out that we have quite a few less kindergarten students enrolled at this time right now than we were at this time last school year, about, off about 300 students less entering kindergartens. Want to make sure we get that message out to our public for incoming kindergarten students, for our parents who have students from early intervention who might be waiting for a meeting or to register. Please make sure you do that. We don't want you to wait till the very last minute to come to registration or to contact registration to start that process. We are working partly remotely right now with the registration department and some in-person appointments, again, by a case-by-case basis. So please make sure you go to the district website and start that process for entering school for next school year. In addition, for any families who are watching right now who also are considering withdrawing and going to another school district, please make sure that you do fill out the proper paperwork, contact your building principal, and we'll make sure we get the proper, sorry, the proper paperwork filled out to withdraw your student and enroll your child in the proper public agency. Dr. McGary, thank you for, I neglected to move the slide. But as you can see, here are the numbers for comparing this year's registration of our total students compared to last year, and also the link to our central registration webpage on our district website. But again, you can search for it. It's on one of the headings once you go to the district website, upperdarbysd.org. That concludes this evening's presentation. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Marshallack. The regular virtual meeting of the Upper Darby School Board, School District Board, the school directors will please come to order. It was a closed session this evening from 5:30 PM until 7:05 PM for matters to be discussed within the limitations for closure deliberations as prescribed by Pennsylvania Act 93 of 1998. For this evening's meeting, there were personnel and litigation matters. Roll call Board Secretary, Mr. Rogers, please.
As I call your name, please state that you are present and can hear the proceeding. Dr. Hag?
I am present and I can hear the proceeding.
Mr. Desneuerz?
I am present and can hear the proceedings.
Mr. War Savage?
Present and can hear the proceedings.
Mr. Neal?
I am present and can hear the proceedings.
Ms. Dawes?
I am present and I can hear the proceeding.
Mr. Fields?
I am present and I can hear the proceedings.
Ms. Curry?
I am present and can hear the proceedings.
Ms. Mitchell?
I am present and I can hear the proceedings.
Mr. Brown?
Here. Thank you very much. Policy 003 allows the board to suspend policies or parts of policies when appropriate. Therefore, due to the current ongoing crisis and the governor's closure order, I make the following motions to suspend language in two of the board's policies until the next regularly scheduled meeting. Policy 006.1, which regulates attendance at meetings via electronic communications, I move to suspend the language requiring board members to be present. Specifically, the language would be, "A majority of board members shall be physically present at a board meeting when a board member attends through electronic communications." In Policy 006, which governs other requirements of board meetings, I move the suspension of language requiring that those members of the public wishing to participate be present. Specifically, the language in the section titled "Public Participation" would remove the words that read "present at a board meeting." Do I have a second?
This is Mrs. Mitchell. I second that.
Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say aye opposed and state your name for the record. Anyone abstaining, please say aye abstained and state your name for the record. The motion carries. Okay, before I get into the next part of the meeting, I just wanted to make a quick statement to the public. It's more of a plea to the public, and it's just based on some of the observations and things that we've encountered thus far. You know, we've received, we're going through a pandemic, and we, this is an unprecedented time, and we've never been down this road before. So really, my plea or my statement or request to the public is one of, for class decorum and decency. We've received a lot of communication that is just not on par with what I think Upper Darby represents. And, you know, my request is that we exercise a little bit of decency and restraint. The frustration is sometimes taken out on us, and, you know, we are all school board directors. We're passionate. We care about this community. We care about the children. We are volunteers. That means we give a lot of our personal time towards that regard. And we all sleep well at night because we really have our, all of the children in the community, we have the best interests at heart. A lot of us, our children are in the district as well. We're all taxpayers in the community, so we're just like you. We're going through the same things. We're frustrated, and we're having to find our way every day on top of having to make decisions that affect all of us. So my plea is that we just have a little bit of decorum before we click send on that derogatory email or before you corner us in a supermarket and demand to know what we're doing about the back-to-school plan. doing about the back-to-school plan, or if you don't, if we, if we're not making decisions that fit your personal situation, please understand that we're trying to do the best for the greater good, and that's what we're doing, from our heart, the best to our ability, and we do care. So, I mean, we've been accused of not caring, we've been accused of doing things for our own benefit. The only thing we benefit from is just trying to do the best for all of the children in our district and our own children as well. So that's just my statement, and I will move forward. Thank you. The minutes of the combined work session, regular meeting of July 14, 2020, and the special meeting of August 4, 2020, are in the hands of each board member and have been made available to the public, I move for their adoption.
This is Leah, I second.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public, Mrs. Buford?
There are no comments from the public.
Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, please signify by saying aye opposed and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain and state your name for the record. The motion carries. The report of the secretary, please, Mrs. Curry.
Thank you, President Brown. The report of the secretary is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Second, Mrs. Mitchell.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public, Mrs. Buford?
There are no comments from the public.
Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, please signify by saying aye opposed and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain and state your name for the record. The motion carries. The report of the treasurer, please, Mr. Neal.
The report of the treasurer is in the hands of each board member, has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
This is Leah, I second.
Okay, I think I heard a proper second. Are there any comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public, Mrs. Buford?
There are no comments from the public.
Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, please signify by saying aye opposed and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain and state your name for the record. The motion carries. The budgeted personnel and enrollment reports have been made available to the board and the public and are recorded as part of the record, no vote is required. We will now have the report of the superintendent, please, Dr. Dan McGary.
Thank you, Board President Brown. Please bear with me, this is a longer report this evening. Much of the contents of what I'll read this evening were recently emailed out to the community members and the public, and we'll certainly post it on the district website. Good evening, President Brown, members of the board, administration, teachers, staff, students, parents, and members of the community of the Upper Darby School District. While I wish we could be in person, I want to welcome you back to the 2020-2021 school year. As always, this has been an eventful summer in the Upper Darby School District, and I wanted to be sure to update you prior and before the start of the new year that begins on August 31, 2020. The opening of the 2020-2021 school year has been complex and ever-changing, and I want to take a moment to thank you for your patience and support. I am excited about working collaboratively with all of you in reaching district goals despite the adversity we face. I would like to share with all of you our continued goals for the 2020-2021 school year. We will continue to recruit and retain the best staff, as you heard this evening from Dr. Counsel, our turnover has really been very positive this year, and we've reduced the number of teachers and administrators leaving the school district. I want to compliment this board and our teachers' union and our leadership, our administrators, for that support, that's a very positive aspect of this organization. Secondly, to provide a multitude of learning opportunities for the students we serve, promote and celebrate a unified, diverse school community. I think this Upper Darby School District is really one of the most important aspects of not just this area, but maybe the Commonwealth, in showing everybody how we can make sure that we celebrate what it means to be diverse and unified in our diversity. Refocus our attention on our elementary school programming so that our young students develop a meaningful educational foundation. Identify student strengths, because every student has a strength, and develop pathways toward graduation. Improve our communication internally and externally. We've made tremendous strides in this area, I want to thank Ms. Buford for her efforts and support of the school district, and I think we're doing great, a great job in that area, but we need to continue to improve, and that goes for every one of us. Improve and attend to the sustainability of our learning facilities so that they become points of pride. Promote excellence in and out of the classroom. Empower our students to take pride in our schools and community in order to promote a positive school climate and culture. And the last goal, reinforce an inclusive learning environment for all by reviewing how our current systems and structures, including the curriculum, staff, and resources we provide, prevent equitable opportunities for the students and communities we serve. While COVID-19 has certainly presented us with challenges, all of us with challenges, we still have many wonderful things happening in the community and for this upcoming school year, and a lot of important information that I want to share with you this evening. As a reminder, this will be coming to you this evening in an email as well. Some dates. New teachers will report virtually from August 18 through August 20 for professional development opportunities. On August 25, it's the first day back for all staff, virtually. On August 31, 2020, it will be the first day of virtual learning for all students, kindergarten through 12th grade. Families will receive a postcard outlining important dates for the start of the school year. Back-to-school letters from principals will be sent to families via email on August 13. Transportation letters to charter and non-public schools will be mailed to families on August 14. And we have prepared transportation letters for district students, and we'll be sending them home after we reevaluate our plans for a return to in-person flexible instruction, pending board approval. We will have a plan, and do have a plan, to distribute Chromebooks. We received many emails regarding this. We will be sending out the Chromebook Distribution Plan for the 2020-2021 school year this week. Distribution will go from August 17 through the 27 at various schools throughout the district. The schedule for each location will also be posted across our social media as well. We will be providing a Chromebook for every student kindergarten through 12th grade. We will also provide evening hours for parents to be able to pick up a Chromebook. Home Access Center. It is critical that all families familiarize themselves with what we refer to as HAC, known as our Home Access Center. Parents can update their contact information, including email addresses, through HAC so they receive regular updates from schools and the district. Schedules, homeroom assignments, and cohort information can also be obtained through the Home Access Center, known as HAC. The HAC system is closed each summer for maintenance and planning and will reopen on August 14. For your convenience, your Home Access Center HAC credentials will be emailed to you this week, or you may email parentportal@upperdarbysd.org to have your username sent to you. Due to a change in the HAC security system, our Home Access Center, parents will need to reset passwords if forgotten, as the district and schools no longer have access to the Home Access Center passwords you used previously. Information on how to get assistance with logging in will be included in the email from the Technology Department. Please look for instructions on how to use the Home Access Center HAC by visiting HTTPS WWW.UpperDarbySD.org backslash capital H, capital A, capital C. Regarding student emergency cards. Due to the virtual-only start of the school year, schools will be using the Home Access Center HAC to verify students' emergency contact information. Communicating any changes to your phone number and email address, which is very important to us, must take place in the Home Access Center so that your child's teacher will be able to maintain home and school communication. Student emergency cards will be distributed to students pending the board's reevaluation of school reopening. So at this time, we need you to please make sure you're accessing the Home Access Center to update any changes in your address or current phone number. Regarding food service. The district has been approved for the community eligibility provision through the PA Department of Education. This means that all students in grades kindergarten through 12th grade are automatically eligible to receive breakfast and lunch at no charge to families every day, beginning the first full day of school. Families do not have to fill out an application. Free breakfast and free lunch will be provided automatically to any student who would like it. The district's grab-and-go food distribution program will be located at nine sites, nine sites throughout the school district. The sites will be at Bywood Elementary School, Stonehurst Hills Elementary School, Highland Park Elementary School, Garrettford Elementary School, Hillcrest Elementary School, Primus Elementary School, Westbrook Park Elementary School, Aronamick Elementary School, and Upper Darby High School. This goes for students in kindergarten through 12th grade can get, go to any one of those locations. Students, parents, or guardians will have the opportunity to pick up ten meals for the week on either Monday or Wednesday between 11:00 AM and 1:45 PM. In the area of communications, it is our goal to continue to communicate regularly with our students, families, and stakeholders using a variety of tools. To that effect, we continue to diversify our delivery of information to ensure that you are able to stay up to date with the latest information from our schools and district. Please note the following ways to stay informed. Our Parent Link System, which is how you receive robo-calls or emails from the school district. In order for you to receive that information, you must update your email address and phone contact information in the HAC known as the Home Access Center. Social media. Please follow, subscribe, or like, and possibly share the access to the district YouTube, Instagram, Twitter, and Facebook accounts. The district also has a mobile app. Please download the district official mobile app to your mobile device to view the top stories for the district, find school and contact information, and access the latest district announcements. You can also receive instant messages from the district and schools via the app. We still have voicemail and email features, our phone systems allow for voicemail to be sent to our email addresses. This means that each teacher has a voicemail that is delivered as an audio file to their email address. Email and voicemail box extensions are posted to the district website as part of the staff directory. We will continue with our weekly electronic school communications. And our website, please check our website regularly for information about schools, departments, school board meetings, and other important information and updates. You can also access information on teacher webpages through the school website. We also can communicate with students and families through Schoology, which is our learning management system. Parents and students are able to communicate through Schoology. Principals will, we continue to send out more information regarding using Schoology as a communication tool soon. We have also established email addresses specifically for those who wish to ask questions or offer feedback either prior to or following each month's school board and school board committee meetings. While it is not possible to answer each question individually, we will do our best to address the feedback we receive, either in the presentation itself or as part of the summary that the board committee chairs share at each board meeting, and as part of the answers to frequently asked questions that we'll post. We will continue regular board and board committee meetings virtually until social distancing guidelines are relaxed. I know this question comes up quite a bit. Until we're able to have more than a limited number of people in one space at one time, we believe it's in our best interest to continue with virtual meetings. This will also allow us to limit the number of outside individuals coming into our facilities as we work to open our schools for in-person instruction. The meetings are live-streamed via the district official YouTube channel. Here are the two email addresses to participate in both of our public meetings. To participate in a board meeting, you can participate by sending a comment to boardmeetingcomments@upperdarbysd.org. And to participate at a committee meeting, you may do so by sending an email to committeequestions@upperdarbysd.org. Regarding student achievement. The Board of School Directors is continuing in its last year of implementation of the current district comprehensive plan. The comprehensive planning team will begin its work on the new plan in October of this year for submission to the Pennsylvania Department of Education by March 2021. The district is continuing in our second year of Hooten Mifflin Heart Courts, known as HMH, into reading for the K-5 English and Language Arts, Reading and Writing Programs, and 6th through 8th grade for the HMH's Into Literature Program. The curriculum and instruction team will also be implementing Sava's Envision Math Program for grades K-5, and will continue in its second year of implementation for grades 6th through 8th. The district has made great strides in its one-to-one device goal for our technology plan for the upcoming school year. We would also like to welcome to the curriculum and instruction team, Ms. Kristin O'Neill. She joins us as the former principal of Hillcrest Elementary School. She's been a member of the Upper Darby School District team for several years and is excited about her new role and working with our instructional coaches. This will further our commitment to reworking on our elementary school programs, especially in the area of reading, writing, English and Language Arts. Safety, security, and school climate and culture update. We have implemented over $2 million in safety and security improvements to our schools through the use of grant funding. We have increased our interior and exterior camera systems at schools and are also improving the security for the entrances of Drexel Hill Middle School and Upper Darby High School. We have trained staff and students on the Safe to Say Something Youth Violence Prevention Program run by the Pennsylvania Office of the Attorney General. We will be training teachers and staff on our new Crisis Go! Safety Mobile App, which will be used district-wide to communicate emergency management information between buildings in our Phase 1 rollout and to parents and community stakeholders in our Phase 2 rollout in our implementation plan. We are also continuing our work on restorative justice, trauma-informed care, our youth court programs, and our award-winning Positive Behavior Intervention and Support Program, kindergarten through 12th grade. Regarding our work on deep equity. The district continues our work on the deep equity process with Corwin Consultants. Our teachers, administrators, and members of our Board of School Directors continue to engage in courageous and meaningful conversation about inclusive practices and social injustice. The district is also partnering with the Pennsylvania Graduate School of Education, known as the Catalyst at Penn GSE, on engaging in community conversation. The Phase 1 goals of the work with the Penn GSE Catalyst are as follows. One, identify the stakeholder groups that must include in the process, be included in the process, and get a sense of the history- in the process, and get a sense of the histories and viewpoints they will bring to the table. Two, identify a set of themes, issues, that need to be addressed to bring more equity into both the district and township. Three, develop a set of principles to guide the district and township and community in working together to address those themes and issues that we discover. Four, give participants an experience of participating in productive civic dialogues that will build trust and engagement and create social capital for the work we will be doing in Phase 2. I announced a plan when I became superintendent to develop a community advisory committee. One of the activities and outcomes of the work with Penn Catalyst will be the development of a 12- to 15-member advisory group, as described by Penn Catalyst as community members who quote "represent as much as possible the age, racial, ethnic, social, and economic diversity in the district, township, and boroughs." I want to wish you, your children, our staff, the best for the upcoming school year. I will continue to ask you for patience, your patience and support as we work through this very challenging time in our lives. While our plans are imperfect, our effort to provide you the best educational opportunities we can are filled with passion and hours of hard work. I am confident that to get together, we will overcome all of this adversity. The Upper Darby School District has some challenges to overcome to make our schools a better place for our students. But working together, we will continue to make great things happen in Upper Darby as we strive to provide opportunity, unity, and excellence for our students. Word President Brown, I apologize for the length of the update and members of the board, but this concludes my report for this evening.
Dr. McGarry, thank you for that comprehensive and informative report. I accept your apology. We will now have an update on the July 28, 2020 Education and Pupil Services Committee Meeting. I believe Mrs. Curry will read the summary. Am I correct in that?
Yes, you are, President Brown. I just want to make sure everybody can hear me clearly before I start the report.
I can hear you fine.
Thank you. The Education and Pupil Services Committee Meeting was placed on July 28, 2020, in the boardroom and in a virtual setting. The agenda summary had several items. The number one agenda item was the 2020-2021 reopening of schools, and it was informational. There was the cohort model that was presented and the full-distance learning model. The district administration provided an update on the reopening of schools for 2020-2021 based on the latest guidelines and information from the Pennsylvania Department of Education. Agenda item number two, which required board action this evening, is the 2020-2021 Adjusted District Calendars. It was presented the District One Page Calendar and Professional Development Calendar. Mrs. Aronda Buford and Mrs. Christine Kelly presented recommended changes to the 2020-2021 calendar based on the flexible schedule adopted during the July 14, 2020 board meeting. This item requires board action and correlated to all six goals listed in the UDSB Comprehensive Plan. Agenda item number three was the Flexible Instructional Day, FID, which requires board action tonight. District Administration presented the PDE application for Flexible Instructional Day, FID, according to the Act 64 of 2019. The recommendation will allow for the online and offline instruction for the next two years if approved by the Board of School Directors and Pennsylvania Department of Education. The website is listed under Board Docs under the Education and Pupil Services. Okay. It's approved tonight. This application will provide flexible instruction for up to five days as a result of bad weather or a school emergency. This item requires board action and correlated to Goals 2, 3, 4, 5, and 6 of the Upper Darby School District Comprehensive Plan. The fourth agenda item was Instructional Online Resources, which also requires board action this evening. Mrs. Christine Kelly presented online resources and electronic book licenses necessary for asynchronous instruction for the 2020-2021 school year. These resources have been selected as a result of teacher input and free access during school closure. All appropriate district paperwork has been completed and is available on Board Docs. This item requires board action this evening and correlated to Goals 2, 3, 6 in the Upper Darby School District Comprehensive Plan. Agenda number five, Proposal for Planned Instruction, Addition of the Juneteenth in Social Studies Curriculum. That also requires board action this evening. Mrs. Catherine Kenya presented recommended additions to the 5th, 8th, and 11th grade Social Studies Curriculum. The additions will include exploring the celebration of how Juneteenth enables students to learn about the complex history of slavery, specifically the Emancipation Proclamation, while empowering them to advocate for social justice and change. All appropriate district paperwork has been completed and is available on Board Docs. This item requires board action this evening and correlates to Goals 2, 3, and 6 in the Upper Darby School District Comprehensive Plan. Agenda item six, Policies. A, Title 9 revisions, board action required this evening was discussed. And B, Policy 206, assignment within the district is informational. On Tuesday, July 14, 2020, the Board of School Directors approved a flexible cohort schedule for the 2020-2021 school year. The 2020-2021 school reopening plan is approved on July 14, 2020. Requires the district reopening plan is approved on July 14. The district's temporary shift school boundaries. Mr. Timothy Lambert, Manager of Data and Information, presented the temporary shifting boundaries and where students will be attending school during the 2021 school year. Everyone knows from the emergency board meeting that we had last Tuesday that this has been changed and we have moved to a virtual school plan for our upcoming school reopening. There were many public comments, a lot of public comments, so they are on Board Docs for anyone's review under Education and Pupil Services. And that concludes the report for the Education and Pupil Services this evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And now we'll have an update on the Finance and Operations Report. Dr. Hague.
Thank you, President Brown. The Finance and Operations Committee met also on Tuesday, July 28, at 6:00 PM in a virtual setting. There was only one agenda item. Mr. Marvin Lee presented an informational item about the Demand Response Program. This program would be a new electricity cost reduction initiative. The presentation included the background of the program, operating procedures during the demand response event, and the economic impact of the program. This item correlated to Goal 1 of the UDSB Comprehensive Plan, and there were no public comments at this meeting.
Thank you very much. Now we'll go to the Instruction and Curriculum Report. Mrs. Curry.
Thank you, President Brown. A little bit of juggling trying to get the mute off. The Instruction and Curriculum Report is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Mrs. Mitchell, I second that.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the board? Mrs. Buford, are there any comments from the public?
There are no comments from the public.
Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, please signify by saying aye opposed and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain and state your name for the record. Motion carries. The Personnel Report, please. Mrs. Mitchell.
Thank you, President Brown. Before I read the report, I would like to take a moment of silence for two members of our community who died during the previous month, with Amy Corona, who was an hourly new time assistant in the district and a beloved parent, and our beloved Will Hurwitz, who was the janitor, the head custodian at Hillcrest Elementary School. He served during the time when my children went there and continued up until the other day. So if we could just take a moment of silence. Thank you. The Personnel Report is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public, and I move for its adoption.
This is Gina Curry. I second that.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the board?
President Brown, this is Don Field. I have a comment or statement.
Please, please continue.
To our new hires, in particular our brand-new teachers, first, thank you for joining Upper Darby School District. We are so happy to have you. Second, this pandemic has to be the most unusual environment to start a teaching career. No other teacher in recent memory has had to start their career in such a way. I want to thank you in advance for your hard work and your patience. Please reach out to your coworkers and the administrators if you are struggling. Everyone in this district wants you to succeed. Remember, if you can succeed in this pandemic environment, you can probably succeed in any environment. Thanks again. That completes my comment.
Thank you, Mr. Fields. Well-stated. Are there any other comments from the board?
I have a comment, President Brown. This is Mrs.
Please proceed.
I also would like to welcome our new employees to the Upper Darby School District family. I also would like to thank Ms. Mian, who is stepping in as the principal of Bywood during this transition time for us. I just want to congratulate her and wish her all the best. Another thing that I did want to mention is during this time of the coronavirus, this is a very difficult time, as everybody knows. Our staff and our administration are doing their best to serve the students of the Upper Darby School District community. We need to lend them our unending support. And as I said at the last meeting, if you're having any difficulty, whether you're staff, administration, or parents, or students, please get in touch with those who can help you at the school district level. We want to make this plan succeed. So thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments from the board? Mrs. Buford, are there any comments from?
There are no comments from the public.
Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, please signify by saying aye opposed and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain and state your name for the record. The Supplies Report, please. Mr. War Savage.
Thank you very much, President Brown. The Supplies Report is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
This is Leah. I second.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the board? Okay, hearing none. Are there any comments from the public, Mrs. Buford?
There are no comments from the public.
Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, please signify by saying aye opposed and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain and state your name for the record. Motion carries. Just going to go back to the policy report. Mr. Des Newiers, I know no vote is required, but did you want to talk about the policies?
Actually, Mr. Brown, a vote is required. President Brown, sorry. A vote is required, and I will explain why. Under consideration by the board this evening are amendments to the following policies. Policy 103, Non-Discrimination Discriminatory Harassment School and Classroom Practices. Policy 104, Non-Discrimination Discriminatory Harassment Employment Practices. Policy 247, Hazing. Policy 249, Cyberbullying. Policy 317.1, Educator Misconduct. And Policy 824, Maintaining Professional Adult-Student Boundaries. These amendments or revisions are required for the district to comply with the revisions to the Title IX law governing discrimination or harassment in education on the basis of sex. Per the Title IX changes, the district must adopt these changes and post the revised policies by this Friday, August 14, 2020. Due to the fact that the underlying and extensive changes in the Title IX law were just announced in May of 2020, PSBA did not publish their revised model policies until 10 days ago. The district immediately started incorporating changes represented by the new PSBA model policies into the above district policies so that the revised district policies will be ready for this evening's meeting. Excuse me. At this evening's meeting, I will make a motion that we waive a portion of Policy 003 functions to allow policy changes related to the Title IX amendments to be adopted without appearing on the agenda for a previous school board meeting. That is, we will take a vote on the policy report this evening, and if approved, the included changes will take effect immediately. Specifically, Policy 003 functions contains the following language. The board may, upon a majority vote, cause to suspend at any time the operation of a board procedure or policy, provided the suspension does not conflict with legal requirements. Such suspension shall be effective until the next meeting of the board unless an earlier time is specified in the motion to suspend. This language allows the board to suspend a policy or sections of a policy. For this evening's meeting, I will make a motion that the board waive the following sections of Policy 003 functions in regards to Title IX-imposed changes to the above-listed The sections of Policy 003 I will move to suspend, read, provided the proposed adoption, amendment, or repeal has been proposed at a previous board meeting and has remained on the agenda of each succeeding board meeting until approved or rejected, and changes in a proposed board procedure or policy ruled by the district solicitor to be substantial at the second reading shall cause that reading to constitute a first reading. Suspending the above sections of Policy 003 will mean that the Title IX-imposed changes to policies voted on by the board at this evening's school board meeting will become effective immediately in time for the U.S. Department of Education August 14 deadline. I therefore make the following motion. Per the section- Per the section of Policy 003 functions that reads, "The board may, upon a majority vote, cause to suspend at any time the operation of a board procedure or policy, provided the suspension does not conflict with legal requirements. Such suspension shall be effective until the next meeting of the board unless an earlier time is specified in the motion to suspend." I move to suspend for this evening's meeting the sections of Policy 003 functions that read, "Provided the proposed adoption amendment or repeal has been proposed at a previous board meeting and has remained on the agenda of each succeeding board meeting until approved or rejected, and changes in a proposed board procedure or policy ruled by the district solicitor to be substantial at the second reading shall cause that reading to constitute a first reading." That is my motion.
Thank you, Mr. Des Noiers.
This is Mrs. Mitchell, I second that.
Thank you, Mr. Des Noiers. I was just going to review it before we actually had a second, but anyway, the um, the suspension of the aforementioned policy to allow for a vote on the Title IX items after the first reading, uh, that's the summary of it, so we already have a proper seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, please signify by saying I oppose and state your name for the record. All those abstaining, please say I abstain, uh, and state your name for the record. Okay, that motion carries.
I would now like to make a motion to adopt the policy report. The policy, um, the policy report is in the hands of each board member and has made available, has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
This is Mrs. Curry, um, I second it.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the board?
I have a comment. This is Mr. Des Noiers. Instead of reading a list of the most significant changes to policies this evening, I will refer community members to the Title IX, July 28th, 2020, summary of Title IX amendments document posted under Title IX revisions in Agenda Item Number 6 of the July 28th, 2020, Education and People Services Committee Meeting Agenda that was read in its entirety during that meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Des Noiers. Are there any other comments from the board? Mrs. Buford, are there any comments from the public?
There are no comments from the public.
Okay. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, please signify by saying I oppose and state your name for the record. Anyone abstaining, please say I abstain and state your name for the record. The motion carries. Okay. The facilities and donation report, please, Mr. Fields.
Thank you, President Brown. The facilities and donation report, reports are in the hands of each board member, I move for their adoption.
This is Ms. Dodd, I second.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the board? Mrs. Buford, are there any comments from the public?
There are no comments from the public.
Uh, Board President Brown, this is Don Fields, I'm sorry, I do have a comment.
Okay, please proceed.
Okay. Uh, first, uh, thank you to the community for the donations that we received. Um, uh, uh, always, always very much appreciated. Uh, also, in the facilities report, uh, we are renewing our leases for the two elementary schools, which, one of which is well outside of our district. Um, at at this time, these leases are required due to lack of space for our elementary school students, but I look forward to the day when all of our students attend school in buildings owned and run by the Upper Darby School District. That completes my comment.
Thank you. Are there any other comments from the board? Okay, Mrs. Buford, I think you said no, but I'm going to repeat my question, are there any comments from the public?
There are no comments from the public.
Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, please signify by saying I oppose and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying I abstain and state your name for the record. The motion carries. Okay, the finance and budget report, please, Dr. Hague.
Thank you, Board President Brown. The finance and budget report is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public, I move for its adoption. This is Ms. Dodd, I second.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the board? Hearing none? Mrs. Buford, are there any comments from the public?
There are no comments from the public.
Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, please signify by saying I oppose and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying I abstain and state your name for the record. The motion carries. We are now at the time for the collateral reports. We'll start with the IU, Mrs. Curry.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, not the IU, I'm sorry, Delaware County.
For the Delaware County.
Community College, sorry about that.
Yes, no problem. Um, there are no updates at this time.
Thank you. Now, the Delaware County Intermediate Unit, Mrs. Mitchell.
Thank you, um, President Brown. Um, the Delaware County Intermediate Unit Board met last Wednesday, August 5th, for their monthly board meeting. The highlights from the board meeting were an approval to support professional development opportunities for the IU and district staff. Um, one of the contracts is with the built-in reading system, um, for them to provide virtual professional development on foundations, K through 2. Um, the next was an approval of the following COVID pandemic-related items. They approved, uh, we approved, um, a pandemic emergency declaration similar to the one that we declared here in Upper Darby. We approved the DC IU and DC um tech school instructional time templates. We approved, uh, addendum number one of the health and safety plan, and we approved the submission of the student services flexible instructional day. Um, the IU will be discussing its um health and safety plan at tomorrow night's committee meeting. If anybody wants to tune in, it'll be available at 6:00 PM on the Delaware County Intermediate Unit website. So you might want to check that out. Um, it was an approval to enhance the student learning and work experience and support future ed-educators. We've um implemented, submitted and implemented Delaware County Perkins Plan Budget for the Delaware County Technical Schools. Um, we signed a clinical agreement with the Norwood Fire and Ambulance Company for the Delaware County Technical School Emergency and Protective Services Program for the upcoming school year, and one with Crozier, also known as CrossFit, um, to provide, uh, the Delaware County Technical School Program from November, it's actually backdated from November 1st, 2018, for June 30th, 2023, at no cost to the, to the IU. We approved to support districts and communities who have specific learning needs with the Delaware County Literacy Council and a memorandum of understanding for a Title III consortium with various school districts throughout the county. Um, and that concludes my report for tonight.
Thank you, Mrs. Mitchell. Legislative counsel, Mr. Fields.
Thank you, Board President Brown. Um, just three items for legislative counsel. Um, we, we don't have meetings over the summer, but I do have some of those legislation I want to report on. Uh, there is a House Bill 2713, Pennsylvania Grow Our Own Educators Act. Uh, this program provides grants to eligible schools, um, to help support, uh, uh, schools in, um, equipping and training aspiring educators, uh, uh, so that they can ultimately become a certified educator. Uh, this was introduced in July. Um, locally, Representative Mike Zabel is sponsoring it, is one of the sponsors, um, and that's a House Bill 2713, so that could be a very helpful bill for us locally. Uh, there's also House Bill 2704. This is introduced by, um, State Rep. um, D-Darrell, clarifying the existing 180-day, uh, 180-school-day law. Um, this allows for districts to, um, more easily submit, um, uh, waivers and, uh, proof of education during, um, uh, crisis times like a pandemic. Uh, it, it'll allow us to have some flexibility in what time counts as education days. Uh, this was also introduced in July. Uh, it would be good if it had a few more sponsors, I think, if this passed, it would make life a little bit easier for our district in general. Uh, also, this is more of a shout-out, uh, House Bill 672 now, which is now Act 65, uh, mental health treatment, uh, the bill repeal section, uh, certain section, uh, in the law to clarify that parents have authority to make decisions regarding mental health treatment for their children ages 14 to 18, while also allowing minors the right to request that treatment and providing for court appeals. Uh, so this is now a law, and I mention this because our very own Dr. McGary, uh, testified about this, um, issue, uh, in, in Harrisburg. That concludes my legislative report.
Thank you, Mr. Fields. Uh, let's see, uh, Mendenhall Tyson Scholarship Committee, Dr. Hague.
I have nothing at this point, uh, President Brown, thank you.
Thank you, okay. Home and School, Mr. War Savage.
Brown, uh, the home and school hasn't met, uh, since our last meeting, though I have a feeling now that opening building blocks have been starting to be set, and now we know pretty much how things are going to go in the interim. I have a feeling that some of those meeting details may be forthcoming, at least that's my, that's my goal. Uh, that being said, even though there hasn't been a meeting, I just wanted to remind the community how vital it is that we get involved, uh, as much as possible within all of our school communities, and it doesn't have to be, uh, exactly physically in a facility, it can also be virtual as well, and our home and schools are a wonderful place, uh, to get involved in the educational life of your child or the students, period, that we have the honor of serving each and every day. So reach out to your homeroom teachers or building principals if you have that kind of comfortable relationship. Uh, we're all open to questions if you don't know how to reach out or contact whoever your home and school member is, uh, we're all here to help and direct teams if that's possible to, again, get involved in the educational life of your, of our, all of our wonderful students. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, technology, I'll just have a comment for Dr. McGary. Uh, you, you talked about the Chromebooks earlier, so can you just repeat the distribution time? I think the public would love to hear that, but first I wanted to commend you and your team for, uh, you, you'd said, well, we're one-to-one, right? You said every, from K to 12, every student, uh, if they need one, can get a Chromebook, so that's a big, big statement, especially considering how large our district is, and I know districts that are one-third our size are, that don't have that ability to do that, so just want to commend you for getting us to one-to-one. I know that's been, uh, something we've worked on for years, so thank you for that, and I just wanted you to review the timeframe for that, thanks.
Yes, and I know Mr. Fields has a comment coming up, uh, Mrs. Buford, I'm sorry. Um, but I, I want to say thank you to the board. I know, um, it's been a passion of the board's to get us there, but what's important about Upper, the Upper Darby School District is it's a team of people, um, that make these things happen. So, you know, I want to say to Bob Holinsky, Christine Kelly, Frank Salerno, Ed Marshalak, you know, you, Dr. Counsel, the board members, um, I'm sure we're going to miss somebody, uh, Craig Rogers, uh, Bob Holinsky, if I, if I didn't say him. Uh, there's a lot of time that goes into writing the grants and working on these and tr-trying to figure out ways to, to make use of the funds. So while, while I am the superintendent, I, I appreciate the fact that it's an unbelievable team effort here, driven by the board and the administrators that we have, and we, we couldn't accomplish these things without the team that we have, there's really a lot of awesome people here. Um, so we'll begin giving out the computers August 17th, um, I believe I said through the 27th. We'll have day hours and evening hours, and for those who are listening this evening, don't stress, there'll, there'll be plenty of communication coming out regarding it. I sent a letter out this evening, there'll be other communications coming out on social media. Um, work with us, we'll work with you. I got a little, I got into a trouble a little bit last time we did this, we had a lot of people outside, so we want to learn from that, from that past, we practice our social distancing, so if you come to pick up a Chromebook, and we encourage that you do, because we'll be one-to-one, as Board President Brown said, um, please wear your mask when you're here, please be patient with us and adhere to social distancing. We are, it's our plan to make sure that every student in kindergarten through 12th grade has a Chromebook, and any issues that come up, please let us know. But I do want to add one caveat to this, we need you to work with us to bring them back in the end, and we, we can get them back to you, because as we, as we give out these resources and materials, we're, we are going to be in school one day, I believe that we're going to be back, it might be different, but we're going to be back in school one day, so these things have to come back with the students back and forth from school, and hopefully one day, for the students that are out there, although I'm not so sure, I'm totally thrilled, but it's probably healthier, we may be able to get rid of textbooks one day and rely on technology for those, for those resources. But I'm proud of the team, I'm proud of the school district, um, yes, there'll be various locations to pick up this information, to pick up your Chromebook, uh, and don't panic, parents, if you're working during the day, as we've done in the past, those who are, you know, single, single parents, folks that are working, uh, on the front lines in the medical, uh, field, or law enforcement, or emergency responders, if you need us to get your child or you a computer, we'll get it for you. Just sit tight, let us know, communicate with us, and we'll make it a point to get it out there to you, but again, it speaks volumes to the school district, uh, getting to where we are right now, and, and it's going to be great, it's going to be a great opportunity.
Thank you, Dr. McGary, and I noticed the list, it was no, neither one of the, uh, middle schools are on the list, right? Even though nine locations, that's a lot, that pretty much covers the entire district, but neither one of, uh, the middle schools are on that list correctly.
Yes, the reason why the middle schools are not on that list, um, is so that we can, because we have some work going on at Drexel Hill Middle School, um, and some work still going on at Beverly Hills Middle School, and we're, while we're virtual, we'll continue to try to make those updates, um, and make them as safe for in, in, uh, in-person return, but also to try to make them as walkable as possible, so the game plan was to distribute the technology, similar to the food distribution plan, um, similar to that at the elementary schools as well, but we'll come out specifically with those locations regarding food, as we discussed, as well as our plan to distribute the technology, because we're also, Board President Brown, and I should have put this in my earlier update, um, because we're fine-tuning this as well, we are also going to be having a, um, plan to give out resources and materials, so any kind of, um, consumable materials, workbooks, um, any kind of literature that students would need to read, textbooks or materials, we will also be coming out with a plan for students to pick up any resources and materials that they'll need to complete the work at home. We're going to try to work it so that we can not overwhelm you with picking up so many materials, that if we do return in person, they'll be there when you return, you have to carry and lug in all these materials for you. But nonetheless, we'll have places and announcement for food distribution, Chromebook, and resources for you to pick up in our schools, and, and stay tuned, we'll continue to update that on all of our forms of social media.
Thank you, Dr. McGary. Did Mr. Fields have a technology-related comment? I think you mentioned.
Uh, no, I have nothing to report for technology.
Oh, okay, okay. Okay, we'll move on to, uh, PSBA. Mrs. Curry, I know you've attended a couple of meetings, you want to report on PSBA?
Yes, thank you, um, President Brown. Um, I just wanted to let the public know and the board, um, that on August 1st, um, I had announced back a couple of months ago that I was appointed, um, graciously appointed to represent Upper Darby, um, as a platform committee member for the delegation of the PSBA. We normally have our, um, uh, Pennsylvania School Board Association Conference in October, and typically at the end of the conference, which is held in Hershey every year, we have a delegation that, um, looks at the platforms that are brought forward for, um, legislation. I just want to read you quickly some of what we did and the purpose and authority. Um, the purpose of the committee, the platform committee, is to consider proposals or changes for the legislative platform for the association, and to report to the delegate assembly, um, the committee's recommendations regarding the platform. The committees shall have the resources and authorities appropriate to perform the specific duties enumerated in this chapter and the bylaws, and upon the direction or approval of the governing board to undertake other activities on behalf of the board. The committee shall ensure that the expenses of its meetings and other activities The committee shall ensure that the expenses of its meetings and other activities do not exceed amounts to write in the annual budget. It was really exciting, um, President Brown and the rest of the board, um, and to the public, to be a part of this activity, um, something that I've really, you know, as a delegate for the past, um, two years, twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen, we always came together to vote on what the platform committee did, but, um, just really being a part of it this time was exciting because, um, I got to actually witness and vote on, um, what school boards have come together and really thought about should be, um, brought before the entire association. So I'm looking forward to possibly being a delegate. Um, Upper Darby has three delegates that can go every year. Um, it will take place, um, outside of the conference this year, which will be virtual, but the, um, the delegation will be held on November the seventh, um, at Mountain View Middle School in Cumberland Valley School District, or of course, through Zoom, as it may have to result in a virtual meeting. Um, I just wanted to say again, um, thank you, um, for allowing me to be a part of that platform committee. We did spend all day on August first, and when I tell you, there were really no breaks from ten to two on a virtual meeting, so hopefully, some of the, um, information that the platform committee is going to bring forward, um, will help our community, um, and our school districts to operate, um, in a more equitable way. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that, and thank you for representing us, uh, so diligently on that platform committee. Uh, the policy committee, Mr. Des Noers, do you have anything additional?
Um, just that I would like to mention, we received, the district received a few days ago, the most recent updates from, um, PSBA, and, uh, they are recommending changes to about ten policies relating to, um, reopening schools during the pandemic, so, uh, uh, we will be bringing forward, um, changes to policies related to that, and we would like to do that, um, fairly soon because, because school is opening, uh, fairly soon, so look for that in the future.
Thank you, Mr. Des Noers, and thank you very much for your, uh, attention to detail. You've really done a, a great job keeping us, um, compliant and, and making sure we enact the right policies, uh, for our district, so thank you for your work on that.
Thank you.
Communication, uh, Mrs. Mitchell.
I just wanted to thank the, um, administration, um, for all of the constant communication that has been going out to the community. Tonight, even during this meeting, a planned email went out with the superintendent letter, um, that is, has all very important information, so I hope that the community engages in that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Neal, do you have anything to add?
I do not at this time, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, old business. Is there any old business from board members? Okay, hearing none. Is there any new business from board members? Okay, we'll move on to the public hearing. We are now at the time for the public hearing. We will read both emailed and phoned comments, which are subject to the three-minute time limit and must include the commenter's name and address. Mrs. Buford.
Thank you, President Brown. We have a few comments that came in that are not following the policies and that, um, there are some names missing, addresses missing. Um, we will not read those, but I want you to know that we did address those. Some of them were requesting information that had already been sent out, so we easily linked, um, what we already have out publicly for those, uh, parents, and Dr. McGary personally responded to, um, those emails.
Thank you very much.
As far as, um, a comment that followed the procedures, we have one from Shaquante Evans, located at two fifty Cambridge Road in Clifton Heights. Comment received on the eleventh at three eleven P.M. via our voicemail. This is a general comment received prior to seven thirty. It reads as follows. "I would really like to know why were parents not allowed or able to have the option of teaching their children either A.M. or P.M.?" This is for elementary. "When I called the school district, I was told to contact the principal regarding this matter. When I did contact the principal regarding this matter, I was told that families could not switch either A.M. or P.M. So as a parent who works full-time, how, how am I supposed to suddenly adjust the schedule without even knowing either A.M. or P.M.? I just think it should have been a better communication there, at least letting the parents know in writing or some type of email, rather, or whether or not they're going to be teaching their children A.M. or P.M., or at least let us choose. I did not get to choose which was best for myself and my family, which is unreasonable and just not fair. Every child is not able to work independently alone. Some children, as you know, suffer from different mental illnesses, or they are at different levels of learning. It is imperative that parents are there and able to teach children, their children, because they are not in-person learning. Please address this issue fully if you are able to. I also contacted the director of elementary, and I did not get these answers. I really do not need, I really do need these answers as soon as possible. Thank you. End of comment."
So, Dr. McGary, it doesn't sound like she's aware that we're going all virtual, or did you want to address that, and, or is that, that's already addressed in the FAQs?
The, uh, this communication is addressed by the FAQs, and I think there's some concern, um, and we need to, again, emphasize tonight, because there was an earlier communication that came in to Ms. Buford's point regarding home access center and information, um, and to this, uh, Ms. Evans who sent this response. I think we need to make sure that if you're not getting our communications, to let us know, uh, please feel free to email me at dmcgary@upperdarbschooldistrict.org, upperdarbsd.org, and we can communicate with you. I think what's, what needs to be clarified, not just to this parent, but to everybody, is that it becomes virtually impossible to meet the A.M. and P.M. needs of every single person, so we have to stay strict with our cohorts, and then, uh, the theory is kind of going tight to loose instead of loose to tight. Uh, the model of going loose to tight, meaning allowing such freedom and then trying to tighten it, tighten it up, becomes difficult, so we're going to come out tight, and then, when we figure out, as we open for in-person learning, how many are actually going to show up for in-person learning rather than staying virtual, it may allow us some more flexibility as we get there, but at this point in time, the directive is coming from the superintendent's office, not Mr. Salerno, the Director of Elementary Education. I am the reason why we're not switching cohorts at this time, and should that change, I'll advise the public and the board of that decision. So, Mr. Salerno is doing exactly what he was asked to do.
Thank you, Dr. McGary.
That is it for the comments this evening. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion for the adjournment of the meeting?
So moved.
Okay, I heard a first and second motion. Uh, all those in favor of adjourning the meeting?
Aye.
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 The meeting is adjourned. Thank you, and have-